Good evening, everybody. We are gonna get started here. Stephen Cole is not gonna be here tonight, and the mayor is not gonna be here tonight. But I would like to call to order the Fiscal Year 20 School Budget Forum for Tuesday, February 26th, 2019. Would you take the role, Mrs. Kennedy?
Mr. DeCanta?
Here.
Mr. Manon?
Here.
Mr. Hawke?
Here.
Mr. Redden?
Here.
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
Mayor and Mr. Cole are also here.
The Budget Forum sort of brings back a practice that we've had off and on over the last 10 or 15 years. We see this as an opportunity for the principals and the school councils to have a conversation with us about what they're focused on over the course of the next year. We'll have the opportunity to ask clarifying questions. This is not a conversation, per se, about the numbers, the dollar signs. That will come closer to April, when we actually get the budget. But once we, on the school committee, have an understanding of what the important values are for each of the schools, Shaun, he'll explain the next steps in the process, but Shaun will then begin to develop the budget with his leadership team. So, we have a pledge of allegiance, yes. Please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance and the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm gonna turn this over to Shaun and Nancy Lysick for now. There will be an opportunity, for those members of the public who are here, there will be an opportunity to have questions asked and answered. If you have a question at the end of the presentation, if you would come up to that table, sign your name and address so that we can capture it for the minutes. As well, if you want a copy of the budget presentation that's about to be made, there are copies on that table as well. Thank you. Shaun, it's all yours.
Thank you. First of all, I just touched a base with the mayor, and I know she apologized not being in here. We have Attorney General in the great city of Newburyport, Mara Healy, so she's at that engagement. But I did meet with the mayor yesterday, went through the presentation, so she's well aware of everything we're presenting and was really pleased with the process thus far. Before we get started, I really wanna thank all of the budget holders out there, which are our principals who will be presenting, Christina Gentili, Angela Beck, Steve Burcom, Donskin, and Kathy Ricchio, for all their efforts. We started this process in October, to kinda get to where we're at. And also, just special thanks to Nancy Lysick for all of her hard work, her expertise in helping create, not only this year, working with me, but over the years, for all of her work in the budget development. So I really have a great person. Nancy and I have been working on this in September. And we're excited about the process, especially as we give the overview tonight in our budget forum. I think every time when we start to look at planning, we really take a look at our mission and really the core values that we have established: kindness, innovation, perseverance, responsibility, respect, and reflection. And really start looking at some of the strategic plan items tied into our budget, really looking at an array of opportunities for our students, for discovery, personal achievement. One of the key factors in our strategic plan is maximizing the internal and external resources and really taking a look at that within the operational budget and optimizing and organizing and redesigning our operations. So it's really tied into our strategic plan a lot of the work that we've begun since September in kinda going over this overview. So just developing some priorities here: essential services for students is always a key factor. Focus for us in coming into the district on teaching and learning and assessments of learning for our students. And as we all know, the social-emotional learning and programming, not only in Newburyport but throughout the Commonwealth, has been a big focus for all schools: inclusionary practices and differentiation. And along with starting to take a look at expanding, enhancing, and the key is sustaining technology, preparing our students for the 21st century. The other priorities, in addition to the ones I mentioned, is really, and this was kind of in our district goals, establishing an evaluation system, working with the teachers with consistency, with the ultimate goal for greater student achievement, and maximizing our resources and constrained resources that we have. And that's not only in Newburyport, but also throughout the Commonwealth. And the governor and legislation and local officials really looking at the funding formula for schools, which they haven't addressed since 1993, but now they're starting to really take a hard look at how we fund our school systems. And really, in this district and through central office and our principals and Kathy Ricchio, who we've recognized in the past, always pursuing grants and additional funding on top of the appropriations that we receive. And we're really working with the city. You know, we're a team within this great city and working with the city and the city council. So, coming into our budget, we're looking at a 3.5 appropriation for FY '20. And when you look at our overall budget, it's really additional about a million dollars as we start this process. If you look over the years, and this is, it just shows the last 10 years, you can see during those tough budgetary times which attacked all of the Commonwealth, there wasn't a lot of funding going into the schools. And you can see with our city council, Mayor Holliday, really have increased the school budget over the past five years. So if you look at '15, it was an 8% increase, '16, 5%, 3, 7, 5, 4, 1, 9, and a 4, 1 percentage increase. And for us this year, this is where we're starting with the 3.5% appropriation. So as we move forward, and we start to take a look at some of the items that we know are on the horizon here for us, is your contractual steps and lane changes for the district. So going into next year, that's an estimated, oop, that's an estimated, oh, try that again. There you go. It's an estimated about $300,000. And then the instructional assistance steps is an estimated $85,000. We are negotiating three contracts this year, and so far negotiations have been going well and have been in a collaborative fashion. But so you estimate a 1% estimate for teachers is about $180,000. And then the other two contracts we're estimating, $31,000 and $90,000. Remember, this is just all estimations. This is not any type of a final settlement or any of that. Very conservative estimates, by the way, too. So the estimated potential salary increases is around $700,000. Trying to be fancy here with the technology. Sorry about that. So the second, coming into that, and only when you're looking at the increases in the salaries, there's different line items within the budget that we can anticipate arise: special education costs, naturally, programming outside of the district, outside placements. Outside placements, each institution can go up to 3% yearly, so we estimate that into the operational budget. Sickly buyback, around $75,000. And remember, the new grounds and maintenance program that we have where we're taking over our fields, total is around $106,000. So beginning estimated increase is around a million dollars right there for the 3.5%. So what we start to look at from there is, you look at trends. So we've looked at school choice, school appropriations, special education costs, and then you start to look at enrollment. So for us, we've already talked about school appropriations over the last 10 years, and we're trying to operate in that 3.5% appropriation increase. And the other area is that we can increase revenue as in our international exchange program, and then additional seating and opening for school choice. So if you look at the school choice revenue over the years, Newburyport, when you, historically, when school choice was approved throughout the Commonwealth, there weren't many school districts that decided to go with school choice. Newburyport, back in 2004, '05, '06, and '07, was one of the first districts that decided to go to school choice. So you can see, you had a big increase. Throughout the last, I would say, nine years, other districts are utilizing the school choice revenue, and so we've kind of gone down in school choice over the years. And currently, on your slides, you have, we have currently 15 students in school choice, which is, you know, an important piece to understand. The other area that we just talked about was our foreign exchange program, the International Exchange Student Programs, the American Culture Study Plan. So that's the firm and the organization that works with China specifically. And so coming into next year, we have three students from China that will be attending the Newburyport Public Schools at per pupil cost, so that's gonna be an additional revenue for the district. And the other piece that we're working on is our Educacious International Organization. Mr. Wolf and his administrative team has really done a great job in establishing that relationship. They've updated the Newburyport profile, and it looks promising. We have one student that's in the process of coming to Newburyport, and then we have a whole group of students from Brazil that are starting to be interested in all the work that Mr. Wolf and his team has done with that. So that looks promising. The other piece are those international programming that's really beneficial, other than cost and bringing in revenue. It really adds diversity to your school population. So in my past experience, we really utilized Educacious where we would have 15 students from all across the world coming into our school system, and it was excellent. So these are some of the areas that we're kind of looking at to generate additional revenue as we develop this budget. Special education costs, and then this is a big, a big area and a big discussion throughout the Commonwealth. You know, this is where the superintendents, and we're looking at the funding areas of funding education. One area that the senators are looking at is special education costs. As you can see, we broke that down into tuition, transportation, staffing, and then on the bottom of our budget this year is about $9,200,000. With the anticipated costs into next year, you know, we anticipate that, you know, that's gonna go up, as we said. Every out-of-district placement and programming can increase their cost by 3%. But we're monitoring this and really looking at working with the special education teachers and our administrative team to really to develop some of those in-house programs that we can really service our students to the best of our ability here in Newburyport. But these costs are, you know, throughout, I think throughout the Commonwealth, and really just really trying to develop that and doing what's best for kids. And that's really our focus here in Newburyport. If we can develop programming for our students and to meet all of our students' needs, that's really our ultimate goal, you know, when we start taking a look at special education costs. The other area is enrollment. So if you look at the enrollment projections over the last 10 years, it's really identical. So in 2009, we had 2,200 students, and here in 2019, 2,278 students. So you've had a fluctuation over the years, around 100 students, give or take. And the other piece with enrollment, and this is a smaller district, so it's a lot easier for us to monitor this, but enrollment figures, if you say, you know, some people will look and say, "Oh, well, there's 100 less students, so you should have 100 less staff." But the 100 less students are in every single grade level. It's not, you know, they're not all in one grade where you can start to manipulate that. The other really big, important piece here is the social-emotional learning. So the issues and challenges that we're dealing with, not only in schools but as society, is our social-emotional learning, is, you know, a higher population of anxiety students and with depression. And that's key, and I always say, it's not just students, it's our society. What's going on in society for adults trickles down to the students. And right now, we have an epidemic with anxiety and depression for adults. So this is something that we monitor, so although you might have a drop, and it's not significant over the 10 years, there's a lot more challenges since 2009.
Shaun, could I ask you, do we have any sense about kids who go to private school in Newburyport?
How many are leaving the district?
Well, I'm looking at this chart, and there's, if we put the recession at 2008, 2009, and then to lose 100 kids for a couple of years while people are coming out of that, it doesn't, wouldn't shock me.
Right.
And I'm wondering if we, if there's any way to track?
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that data is pretty easy to go from eighth grade to ninth grade to see how many students are going, you know, to private school, going to the trades. I mean, that data is pretty easy to track.
I just, I mean, one of the things we hear a lot when we talk about enrollment dropping is, you know, what about all the building in town? And so I just wonder if we have anything, other factors that would cause enrollment to go up and down?
Yeah, and that's a great question, and I think as we move forward in our budget, when we come back, we can probably answer some of those questions, if you kind of monitor But when the president talks about their proposals, they, their enrollment is getting bigger at some of the younger grade levels, so it's something that we'll monitor, but absolutely we can definitely take a look at that. So in general, that's kind of where we're at. So as we start now to head into the budget holders and into some of the elements that we're all looking for to add or increase or to enhance, here's just a general overview. First of all, under professional development, technology, and capital, really just the Swayze Fund and what they do for professional development in Newburyport is just amazing, allocating a lot of resources for teachers, and we're truly grateful. And then our NEF. NEF has supported a lot of, not only construction and curriculum, but also technology, as we all know, and also our capital plan. So we're really grateful to have these two organizations really supporting the school system outside of the operational budget. As we're looking at professional development, and this is within those line items, it's a 3% increase for the professional development for our curriculum. It's really a 10% increase, and when we get to the, as we develop that budget, you'll see where that money's being spent, but I can really take a look at, for the curriculum, it's textbooks and algebra, there's a big portion of that right now that's being utilized going into next year. Our technology programming, our technology budget's a 6% increase off of that individual budget. And building and grounds, we just talked about the new grounds and program that we have for taking care of all of our athletic fields. That overall is a 7% increase in the overall budget. A detailed capital plan was presented in November, and we'll continue to prioritize our capital plan, but that will be part of our follow-up budget meetings with the school committee. You'll see that as we start to outline what we feel we can work with the city with that capital plan and accomplish. Taking another look, there's other central office district-wide areas that we're monitoring. Potentially a 4.5 increase, FTE, for the English language learners, or Ls. We have, 30 weeks, I had the school year with 30 students. We had 12 students move into the district, so we're up to 42 students with three teachers. But as we all know, with some of the mandates, state mandates, especially for the Ls that are coming in, tier-one Ls that need a lot of language support, you have to really provide a lot more resources for them to get them caught up and to really start to, you know, I'm trying to miss the word, but really to be successful in the, in the schools. So that's something that we're gonna monitor as we move in to the second half of the year in looking, you know, throughout our budget process. The other piece, as part of my entry plan and talking to a lot of people, we were talking, especially in October and September, about foreign language. I wanna credit Lisa Furlong and Mr. Wolf and Assistant Superintendent Beck, really reached out to Nicole Sharif, Dr. Sharif from Salem State, who really works with high schools to develop a comprehensive language program. So since October, she's been observing high school and middle school foreign language classrooms, and then really worked with our faculty and support staff in a workshop, boot camp, and she's providing recommendations on how we can bring back that comprehensive foreign language program that I think in the, during those tough budgetary times, that was cut. So that's really promising, and we're really excited about that.
Shaun, is there a timeframe for those, for seeing those recommendations?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's gonna be in the spring.
Okay.
Yeah, on what we can do.
And that'll be shared with us, obviously?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep. So that's kind of where we're at as a district in taking the appropriations. The other piece, before the principals come forward, is we're really digging hard on Nancy and myself, along with central office and the principals, really looking at our resources and maximizing the resources that are already in the budget. And I think that that's gonna be very helpful as we go through the next steps in our process to fund some of these or to reallocate some of the resources within the operational budget. So I'm looking forward to that as we work together. Any other questions? Yes?
Excuse me, the English language people, if we have a whole lot of, you know, Chinese or Brazilian kids, do they bring with them extra English language learning costs?
No, when, with, part of the exchange programs is they have to meet some minimum requirements for English, and that's run through Homeland Security now with. So these exchange programs is a lot of security with student visas, so they have to go through Homeland Security and make sure that, you know, they're, they're up to speed.
What's the, what's the fee for an international student?
It's, for every district, it's per pupil cost. So whatever our per pupil cost is, is what they'll, they'll be paying.
Okay. Oh, so it's the full actual cost?
It's a full, it's a full freight.
So I think it's around $16,500.
Per year?
It's a chunk of dough, yeah. $16,500.
Okay.
I think that's, that's about, all right.
Yeah, it's 100. Whereas the choice is like 5,000.
Correct.
Right?
And we're talking about the funding, when we've been meeting with a lot of the state officials, that's part of that funding, and since 1993.
Hasn't changed.
That school choice funding has not changed.
So if the choice goes up too?
Yeah, well, that's, that's part of our proposal, to try to increase choice. But that has not changed.
Choice to all amount could go up if the Chapter 90 stuff changes.
Correct. If they, if part of the legislation, as they're taking a look at funding formula, that's on, that's on the piece. The other piece, too, especially with districts, is transportation, transportation cost. So there's a lot of proposals out there, working with the senators on trying to address a lot of these issues, you know, working with the superintendent, so.
Okay, thanks.
It's promising. They're listening. I'm not sure what will come out of that, but they've been very open. All right. So at this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Wolf and Principal Furlong. And their councils, or you wanna go, however you wanna.
Let Ms. Furlong go first.
All right, yeah. All right. President Furlong?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So basically, in the middle school, let me just introduce some of my school council members, Deb Catherine and Lloyd Yanachak, who's a teacher, so thank you both for coming. What we've been talking about with our school improvement work this year and also last year, and tying in with the strategic plan of reimagining teaching and learning and the safety and support of schools, that's kind of been our priorities. And along that line, one of the things that we started at the beginning of last year was working with the Brookline Center for Community Health, and I actually brought the brochure home, so it gets used well. We were struggling, I would say, a little bit last year to meet the needs of some of our students who have anxiety and depression, also to attend to the needs of our students who are transitioning back from hospitalizations, whether that was a hospitalization for something like a concussion, or a hospitalization for something like a mental health concern. And because of that, I think, working across the district, not just at the, at the middle school, we began working with the Brookline Center. Last year, our team of teachers and counselors worked at all of the schools, but I'll speak specifically for the middle school, to just set the staging for what would be a bright program at the middle school, what that would look like. That was a lot of professional development, that was a lot of visiting of a variety of different schools, looking at what our middle school models might look like. And we started right up in September with two students right into the program, knowing that we might need to have the program for them at the end of last year. We were able to bring them right into the program and get started. What the program looks at the middle school level is, it's a full classroom that's dedicated, we have actually a smaller classroom, it's dedicated space, it needs to be open for the entire school day, it needs to be staffed for the entire school day. It's a case management program, so it's very intensive from a human capital perspective, but we're finding it to be very successful. We're up to 10 students in the program right now. It is not a special education program, although there are a couple of students on IEPs, it's a program for a variety of different students. We've had two students come in, one student on a concussion who was able to then stay in the program for a little while, as he transitioned back to a full schedule, out of the program, other students who will stay for longer periods of time, depending on what the case management is for that particular student. So the model includes a full-time staff person in the room. That person's title is the academic coordinator. We currently have the academic coordinator staffed as an instructional assistant position. I'm recommending for our budget for the sustainability of the program and for just the strengthening of a person who is in charge of the academic progress of all the students who are in there, which means coordinating with a lot of different, you know, all three grade levels, all subject areas. Sometimes students are doing work in the bridge program room, sometimes they're in their classrooms. The goal, of course, is to get them on 100% schedule back in the classroom, but that can take some time. So our recommendation is to move that position from an instructional assistant position to a full-time teaching position. And that's really the only new addition to our budget. And again, I think that that will just increase the sustainability, allow us to more successfully serve the really specific needs of a population of students who, we're feeling really good about the program this year. This little pamphlet gives you a lot of great information on the Brookline Center's bright models being used across the state, and there are some samples from other schools, both at lower and high school level and there to speak to the networks. Support group, questions?
Okay, thank you. So we do have some materials for ours.
Yes.
Come with a magnifying glass, can't you?
Yeah, that's just the cover page. The main one is gonna be, just to kind of go over the documents that I have in here, is, and then I'll go over our process and introduce our Is, and then I'll go over our process and introduce our school council members who are also here in the audience tonight. So we just have, so one of the documents that we had been working off of is this, which is just pretty much a complete overview of the different increases or the additions of a position that we think will really benefit our school improvement. And the main document that I'll be going, and then the other, the second document is our school improvement plan that our school council developed. And then the third one, which is I'll really be working off of, is just some presentations, which then really attempts to summarize the rationale and connections to the school improvement plan for a lot of these different areas. So first off, I do want to thank, we have Kelly Gray, who is a parent, who is part of our school council, Juliet Walker is also a parent, and Melissa Farmer, part of our school council, and then Mr. Testa, who has been assisting me at the meetings. And I do also want to extend a shout out to Dan Caldwell, Karen Shiplockis, who's one of our teachers, Margaret Pettler, one of our community members. And then we have five students who have also participated in our council, Tess Egan, Zach Childs, Max Folds, Michael Walker, and Lucas Steno. They've really been great in terms of kind of guiding me in terms of the process of really identifying areas for our school improvement. So earlier this year, when I was here and we went over our performance data, and that was kind of our first step. So just to kind of give you an overview of the process that we took on to get to these, to this point, is our first meeting at the school council was really diving into a lot of what I had learned or gained from my entry plan meetings, but then also at the same time, just our overall performance, which was really a lot of the data that I was able to share back in the fall here at the school committee. And from there, we just kind of teased out different areas of focus. And I was able to take that feedback back. I was able to use that feedback with the administrative team to construct a draft of our school improvement plan, which focuses on the goals that you see there on the back of the first page of our improvement plan. So goal one being to improve student growth and performance and increase readiness for advanced coursework. Goal two, increase access to advanced coursework for the high-needs subgroups. Goal three, all students graduate ready to meet the demands of the 21st century. Goal four, all students leave with a personalized and flexible post-secondary plan. And goal five, decreasing chronic absenteeism. The other part, because I know I have my ten minutes here, so I'm going to, Mr. Gallagher's going to pull me off when I reach that threshold. But at the bottom of each of the goals on the school improvement plan, we do have the connection to the strategic plan of the district. So just to make sure that you also recognize that that was also a piece that drove a lot of our thinking. So very similar to what Lisa just shared in regards to one of the increases that we are looking for, and it is our main priority, is the addition of an adjustment counselor to our staff. So like the middle school, we've also been working with the Bright program where they've done a lot of consultation with some of our programming. And one of our programs that we're really focusing on is our academy and transitioning it to one that really focuses on a lot, which is what Lisa was referring to, students that really struggle with anxiety and also are, will sometimes be out of school for decent amounts of time, making it very difficult for them to transition back to school. And to really make that program work, we need a full-time adjustment counselor who is there for that intensive case management. There is already an instructional assistant a part of that program. And the idea is the instructional assistant would still be there supporting kids with their academic work while at the same time getting the counseling from the full-time counselor. The other piece where this benefits us, which also really came from our, a lot of the entry plan meetings, was in terms of what this helps out our guidance department for, because one of our, one of our strategies within the school improvement plan in terms of supporting kids with advanced coursework, but then also the college and career aspect or readiness, is really learning that our guidance department does spend a significant amount of time with social emotional issues, which then also takes away from their ability to really dive in and go deep with students on the college and career process. And so that, so with the addition of the adjustment counselor, it really allows us to kind of focus our counseling structure in two areas, where you have the social emotional support from the adjustment counselor team and then our guidance counselors are really able to focus in on college and career readiness and supports for students and families.
Yeah, Andy, I just have a question. The adjustment counselor, is that specifically dedicated to that academy program or is that staff person going to be serving the whole school?
So right now, we have an adjustment counselor that is part of that program, but then that person is also supporting the mainstream population and the special education population that also needs us to have certain hours of counseling during school time.
So the idea is to have a full-time person staff there
and then we would have two adjustment counselors within the mainstream population.
Great, okay, thank you.
And so then the other areas, which are smaller additions, but really trying to create more flexibility within our scheduling process. So recognizing that we do have these part-time positions in the English department, the world language department with Spanish, but then also we have a part-time music teacher as well, is we're looking to have some increases. So with our English teacher being able to go from a .9 to a 1.0 position. And what this does is our English department does not have a lot of electives that it's able to offer. And so this is one area that this would help us. But then also the English department, because we are a small school, so teachers are allowed to teach one area out of their certification. And we do have an English teacher that's also teaching some of our technology classes to support the growth that's happening in that area. And so one of the other, one of the other additions that is not up here, because we're trying to see if we might be able to do things internally to make it work, would be increasing STEM position at the school as well. But we feel we might be able, as Sean was alluding to earlier, how we might be able to maximize resources that we currently have to make that work, which would then free up an additional section for us to also support ELA intervention. So part of our, where we lost points with the state earlier this year was in regards to the growth rate or the growth of our high-needs population and being able to better support our interventions there. And then with the world language teacher, so recognizing now, so we've had some great collaboration taking place between the middle school and the high school. So really looking at world language, not just as our, at our individual schools, but really looking at it from a district level. And it's been some great work with Nicole Sherf and our teachers. So recognizing as there's greater collaboration and consistency in terms of what we're looking for out of proficiency level with language is that we're going to need to increase the levels of language that we offer, at least for right now, in Spanish. So we should have more students equipped to be able to potentially take an advanced placement Spanish class or maybe we might be able to offer a translation class. So this is a small increase, but realizing that as this continues to move forward over the next couple of years, the goal is that we're able to retain more students in the language. So we were looking at this at a small step. The increase with the music teacher, and you know, when you go back tonight and you're looking through all the documents with your magnifying glass. So we didn't really have a direct connection to our school improvement plan here with this. However, I have been doing work with the port group, which is the parents, the performing, the parents for performing arts here in the Newburyport Public Schools. And so one of the pieces that we've struggled with is to really build our music program. And so by increasing from the .7 to the .8, this does allow us to offer strings across the school year. But then also at the same time, we're looking to increase the band stipend, because one of the things that we've learned through student surveying is that kids typically don't elect to take band because there's all these other requirements that come along with it in terms of the marching band. So we're trying to create greater flexibility in the band class, but then providing after-school time for kids who really want to march to be able to have that additional support from the instructor. And so that was the thinking there in terms of increasing from the .7 to the .8 for the music teacher, but then also at the same time, providing an increase in the stipend to support after-school work for the marching band.
Andy, can you say that again?
Yeah.
Kids have to take marching band?
So right now, how it works, it's the band class. It supports concert band and it supports marching. And so kids that are in the band class also have to participate or part of it is that you participate in the marching. And so we've done some work with the teacher and I've learned a lot more about bands, because I didn't realize it was just different things for concert and for marching. And so really trying to create a lot more flexibility in that program. And ultimately, just trying to get kids to really enjoy music at the middle school to afford some level of flexibility at the high school, so they stay with it. So it's a small step we're trying to take as we're really working to build our music program.
I just wondered, I was really heartened by the conversation that the middle school and the high school are having around world languages. And I wonder, are similar conversations happening, for example, around music? Are you guys talking to?
Yes. Well, we just had a few conversations today and we actually had a few weeks ago.
That was not a planted question, that was.
And that's part of the thinking, because, and that's a piece of it. Increasing some of these levels affords greater flexibility and potentially for us to be able to share people as well. So that as we really look to grow these programs and have a level of consistency, so not looking at schools that were isolated, that were all kind of working together. And so we've had a few conversations in that area already. But again, I do want to highlight this is a very small step in order for us to get to that flexibility at the high school, but we definitely look at it as, as a start.
Do you have a thought of what a bigger step would be?
Well, having.
I mean, I personally, I hate the idea of having a .8 teacher. I think it's disrespectful and not all that great for a program.
No, I understand.
So like if, like do you, do you have a thought what we can do with the full music teacher?
I mean, I'll be, right now, I was hesitant only because we've had such small numbers. And so the idea here, what this allows us to do is that it does allow us to get the full year of strings and allows us to have the flexibility with the band class to see if that does get some growth. With the full-time position, it does open up doors for us to really work better with the middle school.
It just seems like music and band is one of those things that's sort of a self-fulfilling. If we have a small program, kids don't have the opportunity to get that good at it and make it part of who they are. Therefore, it's easy to drop because it's just an add-on. And if we had more teachers in a bigger program and it was more solidified, they would, it would become a bigger piece of the culture and therefore they would, we'd get more kids instead of less kids.
Not, and I do agree with you there.
So that's why I'm thinking like, you know, the, on the if we build it, they'll come model.
Yeah, I'm definitely with you on that.
Yes.
And I was trying to be sensitive just to the needs of the district also when we were coming up with these numbers or increases. So looking to how do we start to get some movement? But then also recognizing just kind of the finances available as well. So that was part of the thinking that went into that also.
How many music teachers?
But I definitely do agree with you.
Sorry. How many music teachers are there now?
We have the .7.
Right now, there's not even one full-time for the whole school?
For the whole school.
Oh, you have, you have.
And then we have our other performing arts. We have two full-time, so with the drama. And then there's some chorus is also part of that as well.
So we have a full-time drama teacher and a full-time chorus teacher?
And well, theater, drama, and then there's other electives that include dance. We have improv. So there's other, so in the performing arts, if you bundle the performing arts together, you have two .7 staff. But in terms of actual instruments, in terms of that part, we have the .7. And so then the other areas of focus, so recognizing that with the Model UN that was approved last year, but the district had taken that on, so recognizing that we will be absorbing that within our part of the budget. So that's what that one is all about. And then the other piece is to create a student activities coordinator position, which really does, as you see here, is tying in with a lot of the work that we're trying to do around increasing student voice, but really working to improve our climate, which based off of the school climate survey data, those are two areas that we were below the state and that Newburyport High School overall kind of, just kind of in that average range. And so looking at this position as a place to continue to help us out with a lot of the structures that we started to put into place this school year.
Is that a full-time position that you're?
It would be a stipended position.
Stipended?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the other piece would be the school safety monitors. So in terms of, and so what this would be is schools typically, you know, may hire retired staff or retired police officers that are present in the building. But then what it does in terms of our attachment to our school improvement plan with the work that we, in terms of getting administrators, supporting administrators getting into the classroom and providing feedback, especially on differentiated practices to support, again, the results of our high-needs population that we saw in terms of the gap from the performance results earlier this school year. And so that's the rationale there with the safety monitors. But then also at the same time, where we do have a decent number of classes that meet after school hours, the flex classes that are offered, and to be able to provide some better monitoring that currently isn't really in place now, is the idea there.
How many are you looking to?
We, I was looking at two.
Two?
Yes, because then that would allow us to kind of scaffold their time or stagger their time. Did I go over?
Do you have a hook?
Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Andy or Lisa?
Steve, I guess.
Hmm?
Maybe put down to Steve.
Oh, yeah, 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 thank you.
All right, this time we'll call up Principal Rossi.
So I just want to recognize Pam Haley, she is in our audience. She is one of my members on our school council. I do have some quick handouts that I'll give you guys in a quick minute. The only addition for MOLIN this year is looking for an additional .5 increase for administrative support. Clearly, you're seeing a pattern in our increases. They are all connected to social emotional learning. We have had a significant increase in the years that I've been at the MOLIN in, this is reiterating a lot of what Lisa said, in students with anxiety, with depression, with social emotional struggles, with behavioral struggles. Currently, we, right now, have had, up to this point in this school year, approximately sixty students, which is twenty percent of our population, that are in need of connecting with a counselor. One of our two counselors who are, they're both .5, but so it's a 1.0 counselor. And as well as our psychologist, connecting with our psychologist for support. We've also had an increase in crisis referrals, so referring students for crisis intervention outside of the school. And, you know, our counselors and school psychologists manage as much as they possibly can, but the reality of any of this, and I'm sure all of the principals would speak to this, is that it absolutely requires one-hundred percent participation of the administration in any kinds of social emotional struggles with any of our students, specifically as it gets more intense for certain students and families. So there's a lot of interaction with the students, putting plans in place, working with families, supporting them within the school, outside of the school in connection to community agencies or whatever, whatever they may need. We also have implemented the Bright program. We're all, we've all worked on that. The Brezner Hand is also implementing a Bright program. Our Bright program is very similar in terms of students that are really struggling in the mainstream classrooms that may, for some reason, there may have been a crisis in the family. There may, they may have had some significant increases in anxiety or depression and being full-time in the classroom is really a struggle. The Bright program allows students to have some time out of the room. The Bright program allows students to have some time out of the room, continuing with their academics, with the goal of working them back in when they're able to manage, you know, full-time back in the classroom. It's also, again, for students that are coming back in from any kind of crisis situation, being placed elsewhere, outside of the school, students with concussions. So the reality of the life of a school and the requirements of an administrator on a daily basis, I do feel like we, the MOLIN students are lacking, and the staff, is lacking the needed support when you add on all the other layers of what happens in the school on a day-to-day basis. It's 100% tied to our strategic plan, because our strategic plan is all about, you know, supporting students' social and emotional, supporting student safety, and improving curriculum. And we've been doing a lot of work around literacy in our curriculum, specifically this year. So what I have that I'm just going to hand out to everybody, or you guys can pass it on. It's just, I really focused on the student support piece because I feel like that's the biggest priority. But then I also just listed a number of other reasons and some data around the need for a .5 increase for admin support. And then, if anyone has any questions?
Maybe I missed something, but when you say admin support, it sounds like you're asking for like an assistant principal? Is that what you mean by admin support, or you mean like a person in the office? I don't really know what you're actually asking for.
Does it help with paperwork, or does it help with actually working with families?
Help with working with families, with students, with staff, with teachers, yeah.
Right, because you like, you talked about curriculum leadership versus, and also social.
Yeah, I don't mean an office person.
You want an assistant principal?
Something to that effect, we're hoping.
A leadership position within a school to assist.
Okay.
I think we're, I think the goal, David, is really like, we would define, the title could be assistant principal, but I think we would define pretty specifically what that might look like, especially with all the social-emotional stuff and all of the, you know, the research around adverse childhood experiences and trauma. You know, I think the person that, who, if we got that position and the person that we might look for, I would want them to have some kind of that level of experience to provide that support.
Can I ask you a question? I was thinking about this when Lisa was presenting too, but all of these students going into the Bright program or the now needing counseling, the 20% increase, do we, as a district, do they get 504 plans?
Often, yes. Yeah, often, yes, yeah. It just depends on, it's so individually based on what's going on with the student at that point in time. But the answer is usually yes. There will be some, if not a 504, they may have an IEP or we may have a temporarily, you know, a temporary plan in place that's like, here's an instructional slash behavioral plan for this student now, because it could be something that, you know, is a required support for a couple of weeks and then they're able to be reintegrated back in and are successful.
Right, but they would still, in my experience, have some sort of counseling check-ins?
Yes.
So there's a weaning off period, which is why I was thinking about 504. I mean, all of that requires its own level of administrative support.
Huge, yes, absolutely. And I would say too that like, you know, some of the students may have had a family crisis that occurred, you know, during a given school year and they were not on a 504 or something. But all of a sudden, you know, there's a crisis that happened and we want to get some interventions in place based on the need, yeah, right. And again, with trauma being such a unique experience for each child, there are some kids that have a traumatic experience and either because of all the outside supports and family supports and safety in school that they don't need, you know, a level of, they cannot check in with the counselor without necessarily like having to be on a plan.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's like an SST, RTI sort of thing. But still, who's ever sharing that decision-making process? Needs to be in place also.
Yes, and I have RTI even listed on there, which is our SST process. It's just another one of the things listed that, you know, requires some additional support.
As we move forward and we, you know, are able to provide this .5 increase, I would just encourage you to come up with a job title that isn't, doesn't evoke other things. You know, David suggested it was an assistant principal, and I think people have in mind what an assistant principal does and...
Right.
It's more of a student support or student services.
I only said that because it's what I do all day, as an assistant principal. Like, I know exactly what we do.
Yeah.
It just sounded like you were dancing around trying to say you need another administrator in the building, because that's got...
Well, because I don't necessarily, sometimes I feel like an assistant principal like goes right to just discipline. And it's definitely, you know, that's not what it is in the case anymore, so.
Right.
Yes, I agree with you. Any other questions?
I have to say that I, after hearing three of these stories, I'm really impressed with the degree of attention you and the council are paying to the social-emotional needs of kids. It really seems like there's not just a focus on that, but it's a coherent focus on that, which is great.
I think as an administrative team, we all work on it closely, you know, in trying to align what the Brez is doing when they come up to the MOLIN and not MOLIN sharing the building, having similar, you know, our plans and our, the things we're putting in place for kids around PDIS are all similar. Thank you.
It's like the Oscars, I'm getting nagging. Principal Sullivan and Principal Davis, come on up.
To share, the Brezner, it's okay. The Brezner Hand School's proposed budget priorities for the upcoming school year. As Sean had stated earlier, we are focusing on careful monitoring of student enrollment. Last year was the start of somewhat of an unusual year, and this year has been even more unusual than that with a high number of student registrations throughout the summer and throughout the school year. As of today, we welcomed two more students, siblings. Yesterday, two siblings from Brazil and another child will be beginning on Monday. So we're going to give you some detail about what that enrollment looks like and anticipated enrollment for the upcoming school year. We worked with our school council. We do not have any representation here from school council this evening, but we would like to recognize the members of our council. We had a robust meeting yesterday, which was really good timing for us to wrap up the conversations yesterday to be fully prepared for this evening.
So yesterday, we were able to go forward a little bit with our school improvement plan and our outcomes and measurements, talk a little bit more about the alignment with the strategic plan, which we're focused on for this budget as well. But we had a really great show yesterday. I can't blame them for not wanting to repeat tonight, but we do want to recognize all our hard work because we have a very dedicated group of parents and teachers and a community representative this year. So we'd just like to acknowledge your teachers, Linda Dodge, who's one of our special educators, Janice Cahill, who's at second grade. Oh, third grade, she moved, sorry, third grade. Kristen Callahan, who is at second grade. And we also have Mary Gasparo, who works in the Bright program that you've heard so much of, and she's one of our instructional assistants. And then for parents, we have many new parents this year, which is nice. Mary Beth Shiver, Christine Cuchira, Tron Tron, Andrea Wheatman, Elise Buckley. And similar to the high school, she's doing double duty. We have Marvee Pedler, recently married, her last name is now. Harrington, who's serving as our community representative. And that's been a really nice tie-in with some of the work that we've been doing with the assets and developmental relationships. And we've been trying to pair a lot more closely and partner with youth services at the lower level, because that is sort of a goal for them and a goal for us as well. So we're really happy to have such a great, thriving council this year. And they were really key in putting this together for us.
So yesterday, we also took a look at our school improvement plan. And although we're focusing primarily on enrollment, we are able and are connecting with Strategy 1 from the school improvement plan for reimagining teaching and learning, as well as Strategy 4 and meeting needs of all students, and Strategy 7, a safe and supportive school environment.
And just to add to that, we heard so much about the Bright program, both from Principal Farlong and Principal Rossi. And we would be remiss if we didn't thank you again publicly for the addition of our school social worker last year. And that's one of the reasons why we don't have a request coming forward for social-emotional, although we still do have the same needs and the same heightened amount of students that we're working with and partnering with the Bright program and being able to bring on our new school social worker, Christine Catalunya, who supports our other school adjustment counselors, has been absolutely huge this year. We've been able to keep children within our school, to not send them out, and to really support them on a much more intense basis. So although it's not a part of our proposal this year, it was last year. We just wanted to thank you for fulfilling that.
Okay, we're going to take a look at enrollment document that I just shared with the school committee, and we're going to speak briefly about preschool and kindergarten.
Sure. So preschool, you know, if we had more classrooms, we certainly have quite an interest in our preschool and our integrated preschool program. And I would love to open so many more classes as I think the community would. We have our lottery for preschool this Friday. And we are going to hold, given the proposal that I had shared with you back in, I believe, December or January, but we're going to hold at six classes of preschool. The makeup of our preschool is always to enroll up to 15 students in the integrated setting, of which seven students can have IEPs or different needs. And then the other eight students would be typically developing or role modeled peers. And that's generally what we hold the lottery for. So we have a lot of interest in our program, which is great. I think it speaks very highly to how comprehensive the program is and more importantly, to the great job that the preschool teachers do who are duly certified in both special education and early childhood. So although it could increase the whole bottom floor to preschool, we just don't have the space. And one of the reasons that we don't have the space is we have seen an increase coming into kindergarten. So the numbers are always pretty volatile with kindergarten. We never really quite know how many children we're going to open the doors with in August. I've shared with you in the past sort of birth rates and projections based upon that. We look at the census. And when I first came to you a couple of months ago, we looked at perhaps, we thought at the time, a dip in enrollment, just looking at the birth rates. When we go back to 2014, there were 135 live births registered for Newburyport. But then, through the work with our school council, we got the idea of actually calling all of the preschools around here in the local area that could have students who are Newburyport residents and are age-eligible for kindergarten next year. And just to give you an idea, we draw from quite a lot of preschools in the area. I'm not going to read them all, but Brezner Hand, we have 45 kids coming from our preschool program into kindergarten. Then we look at Bright Horizons, Children's Castle, the Kinders in Town, Quine Mia, the Learning Trees, and Mrs. Murray's Montessori, the list, which I'm happy to share, is quite long. And we were really surprised that there are 163 children who are Newburyport residents, who are enrolled in preschools that we know of right now, that potentially could come to kindergarten next year. So that kind of was a bit of a shock, because we were expecting perhaps less. You won't get all 163. Some of them will certainly go to River Valley Charter. Some of them, as David, you mentioned earlier, may go to private schools. Some of them may do an additional year of preschool. But I think it's fair to say that the number is pretty big. And so I've ups our projection at kindergarten to be around 140, which is shaving off about 23 students. We will have to see, we're watching it as Superintendent Gallagher's opening. We're watching that very closely. Usually around this time of the year, by April, we'll have about 100 students registered, and then it kind of increases all the way up through August. So I don't have a number for you yet. We are doing ongoing registration right now. But we do anticipate with those known children that we're going to have a big kindergarten class again, just like we had last year when we finally came and said, oh no, at the end of the summer, we need that eighth section. So we're not willing to give that section up in terms of looking at it conservatively. We really think that we're probably going to have to hold on to eight. And I will certainly be in touch with Superintendent Gallagher as those numbers come in. But sometimes we just don't really know until we hit the summer months. We tried to do our very best in terms of advertising, sending out email blasts. We had a great showing at our information night. It was packed. Really, we usually set up about 200 to 250 chairs, and that audience was really full. So I think it's all indicating that we're going to have a little increase or stay the same as to what we had this past year.
Just for, I was hoping there wouldn't be as much math in the presentation, but there is. So when you talked about 163 kids in Newburyport preschool that could come to kindergarten, is that, is that 163 minus 140?
No.
That's 163 that could...
There are potentially 163. I am doing a best guesstimate at we'll probably get 140 of those kids that we know about. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so it is, it is, 140 is sort of part of the...
Yes, absolutely.
I thought it was like, there's 163 kids outside of 140.
No, oh my gosh, no, we have to build another school.
I was going to say...
That's the trailers, I guess, I don't know.
No trailers, no trailers, no trailers.
No, it's just a large number, and we'll have to see where everyone lands. You know, we are, yesterday, for example, you know, to register for kindergarten, most everyone attempts full day. And there is a fee associated with that, because Newburyport is one of 45 communities that are still tuition-based. So, you know, I, it's not only do they have to have all their paperwork in, which is a little bit of a process, but they also have to make a deposit of $380. So yesterday, we opened back from February vacation with only 48 applicants. And I was thinking, oh my goodness, you know, where is everyone? But in just one day, we closed with 66. So we had almost 20 more kids register. And I anticipate by the end of the week, because we try to get everyone registered as much as we can during the month of February, I anticipate by the end of the school day on Friday that we'll be pretty close to the 100 mark. And then that's fairly typical, and then we have families start to trickle in every month. But again, we don't really know. It's always a guess, so I'll just have to keep you apprised. But the numbers certainly do look large enough that I would propose holding with the eight kindergarten sections until we have data otherwise. And then just to transition, oh, I'm sorry.
When you, we met before, you said there was very few half-day kindergarten kids?
So far, we have one registered for half-day.
And that's been going down every year? It used to be a lot more?
So a few years back, I think it's three... So, a few years back, I think it's three, maybe four years, I'll have to check. When our half-day population really started to decrease, we were running classes for half-day with anywhere from five to 10 students, and also paying a halftime teacher, and also giving up classroom space just for that halftime class. So, when the numbers started to dwindle, what we found is that the half-day kids weren't really integrated with the rest of the full-day kindergarten population. From a financial perspective, it wasn't great to give up a classroom paid space and then also pay for a halftime teacher. So, we started to integrate the half-day children into some of our full-day classes. So, now, parents really have the option that if at some point during the year, they're interested in moving their half-day child to full-day, they can do that at any time of the year.
Because they already take up a spot.
Right. Still stay with the same teacher. They just aren't dismissed in that half-day time period.
So, if we were went to everybody who's full-day and not tuition-based, would we need to have another additional teacher? Would it be the same amount?
Well, it would be the same amount, but that would be a huge increase in budget. Because...
Just in general.
If you don't, if you charge for tuition, you have to have a half-day option. So, if we went to free tuition for kind of, if we went to only full-day, it would have to be free tuition.
I think if we were charging tuition, there might in and of itself be an increase.
Absolutely. Oh, I absolutely think so. And so then, just to speak to them, the current kindergarten class going to first grade, and this is a really good point that you just brought up, Bruce, because, because we do charge tuition in kindergarten, oftentimes, parents might decide to pay that tuition to another school, particularly if there might be longer hours or something that meets their work schedule, or perhaps they've been in an environment where they've been really happy with for their children for preschool. The charter school is tuition-free. So, that sometimes is a draw at kindergarten. But typically, not only do we know the enrollment of where we are for kindergarten going into first grade, but Christina always sees an uptick in first grade. We always budget for at least 10 more children in first grade. And in previous years, we've had even more than that. So, not only do we know that we have eight sections of kindergarten currently going on to first grade, but we will anticipate getting a handful more students in first grade. And right now, we only have seven sections in first grade. So, we are also anticipating an increase to eight sections in first grade to account for the larger class this year in kindergarten. And Christina has some of those numbers, too.
And what you can see on the first page of the document for grade one, projected for 1920, we are carrying over the 137 kindergarten students. And then you'll see a plus 14. Plus 14 is for an anticipated number of students that may register between now and the beginning of the school year, which may then also carry into following the beginning of the school year throughout the course of the year. This year, we have 20 new first graders thus far. Last year, since the, well, since July 1, since the start of the year. And last year, we had 10. We typically register or consider holding space for eight to 12 students. This year, I'm raising it to 14. We may not get that, but we may, because the trend is now moving up. In grade two, we currently have 127 first graders, transitioning those 127 into second. I recommend that we continue with the seven sections that we currently have in second grade, and the same for third, continuing to proceed with seven sections in third grade. If you take a look at the backside of your document, it speaks to the recommended school committee class size guidelines. As a district, we have been extremely fortunate to be in a position, year after year, to work within those guidelines. You will see next, for newly registered students for the 17, 18 school year, which was a year ago, we had 10 first graders, four second, and 11 third graders, whether they registered during the summer, prior to the school year, or throughout the school year, yielding 25 new students in one through three last year. We also had nine withdrawals. This year...
What might cause a family to withdraw their student?
A whole host. Job change, the parents moving a distance, even moving within schools, within the community. But it's a whole host of reasons. And we keep track of that. I have that data, the withdrawals, as well as why they're coming in. And then this year, like I said, is a whole new situation. 20 first graders new to our school, 10 second graders, 18 third graders. Now, that is a total of 47 students. Thus far, we have had 19 students withdraw. But that is still a net of 28 new students for this school year alone in grades one, two, and three. And if you would like to take a step further, as of yesterday, our enrollments for pre-K three are documented, and our current class sizes are also documented. So, that currently, in kindergarten, we have 17 to 18 students, first grade, 17 to 20, second grade, 17 to 21, and in third grade, 20 to 23. You can see that we're working within the framework of the school committee guidelines. And you will see that they vary. And the classes vary, because we can't always predict when a student is going to move out. But when a student moves in, we have to think about the best placement for each and every one of those students. And there are a whole host of things that we need to take into consideration for each child as they become new to our school.
And then we have one more request outside of the anticipated enrollment, in that it speaks to our library and technology program. So, a couple of years back, in order to save some money, we recommended that our library, media specialist, and our technology integrator was moved into one person, into one position. And Catherine Page, who serves in that role, has been doing a great job balancing it quite a bit. So, on the library end, we still have preschoolers and kindergartners that come up for a more traditional library experience in terms of a read aloud, in terms of something that will enrich the curriculum, acclimate them to how to use the library, do a book exchange on a weekly basis, grades one, two, and three. Have a different model for a library, where it's more like the hub of learning, and the teachers will come in and they'll work with the librarian to do research or projects to integrate into the curriculum. But then, Catherine Page, the librarian, becomes also the technology person, and she is responsible for the whole host of instructional technology. And this year, we've been working very hard to, for the third grade online MCAS, which will be the first time we have third graders who are taking that as a computer-based test. So, there's been a lot of work that has gone into that as well. We have a halftime assistant that kind of takes care of everything when Catherine is spread between the library and the tech lab, in terms of reshelving books, keeping it organized, checking kids in, checking them out, and everything that you can imagine that goes into that. And we're finding that it's quite a lot to manage between the two settings. And so, therefore, we've asked for an increase to the library assistant position, to make that a full-time position, so that we're not coming back and asking for another professional position for a library, a library media specialist and a technology integrator, but we're asking for more support for that one person, just to handle the many components of that position.
Well said. So, any questions?
That concludes our presentation.
Can I just clarify? So, on this, this is, you only have seven teachers in first grade this year?
Yes.
That's incorrect.
Right, yes.
And we're anticipating the need to eight.
So, shouldn't these trends continue? And we find ourselves needing eight sections at each of the five grade levels? Do we have the classroom space for that?
Well, we, every summer, we make a lot of moves to meet the needs of programming. So, we do have some luxuries in our new building, where we have a full-size physical therapy classroom this year for the first time. We have a full-size occupational therapy classroom. We have special education classrooms that are utilizing full space. So, with the addition, we will need to make space. We will have to give something up in order to make that happen. Every summer, we have to make adjustments based on class sizes, based on programming from so many perspectives. And we will do that. We also have a lot of programming in our school in the summer. So, the building is a very, very busy place all summer long, and so we have to be able to navigate that, too, and then also think about getting the building ready for the fall each year.
There are always shifts happening. When we opened the Bright program this year, obviously, that wasn't an empty classroom in the building. We had to shift some of our thinking around. So, we make it work. It's not always easy, but certainly, you know, it is something that we want to watch closely.
I guess that's exactly the point, is as we, as we think and are looking forward, how many of those special spaces are we going to give up? And do we want to give up? And do we have the capacity within that building? I know we just built it, and here we are talking capacity about it. But I do think it's something we need to keep an eye on.
And I wonder what kind of an impact additional housing is going to have here in our district in a few short years. You know, we really thought, once we were able to move into our new school, that things would be stagnant in a way, not stagnant in a bad way, but that we would be stable and we would not have the constant moving around, summer after summer, even move around during the school year, believe it or not, which we've done this year. It's just the reality of public school.
One thing that I would just add, Nick, is that we've really worked hard to grow our integrated preschool program, so that we no longer have a two-day-per-week, two-hour-per-day model. And you've been so supportive of that. But right now, we have very few parents that are interested in the half-day model. They're all looking for more hours or extended day in that preparation for kindergarten. When we did have that half-day, we were able to get two sections into one classroom.
Right.
Right? So, in a sense, we gave that up for our philosophy, which I hold firm on. But that takes up a little bit more space, too. And I'm not recommending that we go back a mile, but that's been a shift, right, in our thinking, in how we were able to utilize perhaps just two classrooms for, it used to be up to three sections for each teacher, because a teacher taught a morning, two days a week, an afternoon, two days a week, a three-day morning program, and a four-day afternoon program. So, we had sometimes one teacher that was working with 60 preschool students. And what we had found is that they really weren't as prepared as we would have liked them to be going into kindergarten. And that's when we kind of changed it. But that had an impact on space, on something that we...
I love the programming you're putting into place, believe me. I think that, you know, the proof is in the pudding. People want it, which is an indication that you're doing the right things. The question, I think, is saying, okay, it is easily to shuffle and to blend and to move and to redesign space up to a point. And I think from a long-term planning point of view, the school committee needs to have a reading on what that point is. So, that we, we have fair warning that things might change, or that, you know what, yeah, this was just a bubble, and it's coming back down to a more manageable size in the future. But this is, this is why I'm asking that question.
I feel like there's a trend. But the bubble, we had thought, was going to drop off in these coming years. And that hasn't happened. So, whether that's to new developments, or just Newburyport being such a fantastic place to educate your children, that more people are coming in, I don't know. But initially, when we had looked at it, we thought that it was going to dip these few years, and it's the exact opposite. It seems to be happening. So, that's why I'm calling for real data. Yeah.
It's a good problem to have.
We have families moving back that were in Europe for two to three years for parents' jobs. They have come back over these last two years. We have families that have moved in that have said they've come because of our school district and the supports that they understand their children will receive. So, we are drawing for a variety of places and for a variety of reasons.
Sean, at some point, would it be possible for you to work with city council and find out exactly what the projections are? Because if I'm not mistaken, we keep hearing that enrollment's going to go down in Newburyport over the years.
Yeah, we have, we have, that would be part of our follow-up, yes.
We have the projection data, and traditionally, my experience is the projection data is not really worth the paper it's printed on, frankly. That, that we have, it always seems that there are more kids moving in than developers project or could move in.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, and you deal with, you know, as we, you know, as we move forward, start looking, there's ways of, you know, you're shuffling classrooms and things like that. But, you know, there's different, different areas that you can, can address with when you're starting.
The school committee rep to the building committee, it no longer serves on the school committee, so I can't sort of ask. But I have this nagging suspicion that when we were talking and planning and trying to figure out what the needs of the community were going to be, we didn't talk a lot about what would happen if the state suddenly decided to go to fund kindergarten, or that we decided that we weren't going to, we didn't talk about what, what our needs would look like if that happened. So...
I think you're right. We did not...
No longer nagging suspicion, now nagging at me. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Sean, I assume that Nancy is going to have an opportunity to present, or is she just observing here? She's just observing?
No, I, uh...
You made her see.
We've worked her hard since October, so I told her, my goal tonight was to present, where she could just sit back. No, and the other piece is, and we've been talking about funding and the funding formula, the governor's bill, you know, there's, there's four big areas. You know, we talked about special education, but that's not the only one, for a common law. You have healthcare costs, our, a lot of school districts are dealing with the healthcare cost. Transportation, a lot of the same districts in similar demographics and regional, we're talking about the transportation cost. Working with some superintendents, it's over a million dollars in different areas. We have the social emotional learning, the increases in supporting our students. As we all know, they have to be ready physically and mentally to learn for the day. So, we're, we're working with students and families with that. So, there's, there's some big areas. When you're looking at the education formula, chapter 70 and Circuit Breaker, and that's been a real involved discussion, constructive dialogue with the legislator and superintendents and school districts to really wrap our heads around this, because remember, they haven't changed that formula since 1993. So, you know, they, they couldn't foresee many, many years ahead of, of the challenges of education. So, I credit, you know, the governor's office and the legislation on, say, all right, let's take a look at the funding formulas to support public education in Massachusetts. So, those are a lot of dialogues that's going on now. So, just to conclude, first of all, I just want to thank the parents, the students on all the school councils, you know, as a former principal, that work that's done at the building level is extraordinary, because you get the input from parents and students and teachers to... to really move the district forward, especially at the building level. And then collectively, we'll work together as a district to really develop those priorities. So when we're looking at a lot of these increases or proposals, so we're coming in at this point around a 4.5% increase over the 3.5%. And that's kind of wherein, I feel we're in a good place. We're now collectively, as a leadership team, we'll start to prioritize. You know, Nancy and I will go back, look at our operational budget as Mr. Walters and principals alluded to, reallocating resources, maximizing our resources within our operational budget to really start to narrow down to get to that target of a 3.5 increase. For us, we'll continue to make those incremental budget reductions together. The other goal of mine is to continue to provide school committee with the budget updates, you know, before the finalized budget of April where my goal is to have the school committee and the community feeling pretty good when you have to vote of kind of where we're at, you know, throughout this process, with a lot more detail as we start, you know, making our revisions and reductions. With the ultimate goal to have you have a final budget of April 22 at our school committee where we can vote and hopefully feel pretty comfortable with a balanced budget moving forward. So that's our goals and going through a lot of our pictures, I, you know, the veterans that came and spoke, I just, this picture, I think, really sums it up. It's amazing what we can do when we're in it together. And that was a great day for Newburyport Public Schools, having the veterans come back. And it's really talkable life experiences, so.
As the cultural historian of the school committee, I'd point out Dr. Orlando is standing there. Dr. Orlando is the one closest to the flower there.
Great. So overall, I just, I appreciate all of the efforts that have gone in. I appreciate really the community, really all working together and doing what's best for kids. So that's kind of our overview, you know, presentation. And, you know, on our side, I think we're finished. Is there any other final questions?
Are there questions from the school committee? Because I'll open it up to the people who are attending. So this is the start of the process.
Correct.
Okay. If there's anybody in the audience who has any questions that they would like to have answered while Stanford's still here, if you would just come up to this microphone and sign in your name and your address so that we can capture, we'll be capturing your comments. We also try to capture the name and address. Is there anybody in the audience who has any questions at this point? Looks like this year, this forum is coming to a close.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much to all the principals and school councils.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you want to take a minute or just follow right into the next one? Let's go.
Five past eight, break.
These guys are going to break, they want to go. Let's go.
We do the warrants?
You're going to watch the weather?
We will be doing them.
That's right.
What's up? A Callahan member is going to watch the weather for me. Give me the weather updates.
Steve Epstein says right now.
NPR said it was going to dump two inches tomorrow.
It's going to dump, dump two inches of snow.
Is that the word they use, girl?
Dumped.
That's like, it's more like a sneeze.
Followed by five inches of rain or something, you know, to wash it away.
My boy Dave Epstein hasn't changed since early this morning. I like to send Sean a screenshot of his face. Good morning. Do we do the warrants of Steve?
We will be. We're going to go to the business meeting and then we'll do the warrants.
Will we do those if Steve's out here? Is he going to read it?
Yes. Nick's going to.
You're taking over?
Nick is taking over. He's moved into the seat.
You got to be ready to sign, buddy. You're not going to get away with that.
Okay.
Right. You're not leaving us, are you, Mrs. Kennedy?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
What's the heave there? It's number one.
I didn't ask Mike. I lived in Buffalo for eight years, man. I'm very comfortable. Let's, why don't we call to order the business meeting of the Newburyport School Committee for Tuesday, February 26th. Period of public comment. If anybody has a comment they would like to share with us, we're happy to hear it. Seeing none, hearing none, we would move to the consent agenda. Do we have any warrants, Mr. DeCana?
We do, Mr. Menon. I want to know everything you know about these warrants, Nick.
I reviewed every number down to every decimal point, and they are accurate.
You just kind of threw down the gauntlet, didn't you, there?
I did that in the executive session.
He's never done that with Steve.
I know that, I know that. I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $481,123.16 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Sir, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Yeah, actually, Nick, you have like an FM radio voice. Maybe we ought to have you fill in more. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Passed unanimously?
I move that the following named bills and payrolls of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $15,137.97 be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account. There are no conflicts.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? None?
I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $15,121.24 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Any conversation, discussion? None? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Posed? None? Is that it?
That's it.
Terrific. Thank you. We have a set of minutes for the meeting of February 4th, 2019. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Or the second?
Second.
Any comments, feedback, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? None? We have a high school field trip next on the agenda, so I assume that Mike and Andy are here to talk to us about it.
Yes. So we did give the kids the night off, realizing that it was a different format because usually we try to have the kids come and talk about the trip. So on March 7th through the 9th, we have three, so we had 14 kids participate in the DECA competition, the regional DECA competition, back in December.
DECA?
DECA, which stands for Distributed Education Club of America.
Thank you.
And so it pretty much, it's a lot of business oriented where they come up with, they're given a task, whether it's entrepreneurial or marketing. And three of our students were able, were passed on to the state level, which is the 7th through the 9th. And that's going to be, they'll be staying at the Marriott Copley, and the three students are Chloe Hansen, Casey Hansen, and Elise Ferreira. They've done an amazing job in preparing, just the amount of hours after school that they've spent, and being an Ash, being a huge supporter, and really being the coach for all of the kids that have been a part of this, with also support from our business instructor. So we are here to just seek approval from the school committee tonight.
So moved.
Or I'm here.
Second? Second. I need discussion. I just have a question. Can we have these students come to the school committee meeting after the competition to talk to us about what they did?
Sure.
That would be great.
I would only add, along with our approval, we send congratulations to the students for making this one. Hello?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimously passed. A conversation about school choice is next on the agenda.
Yes. So you've heard all the, a lot of the enrollment, so I'm recommending at this time that we open up eight seats for grade seven, and then we're opening up 10 seats at grade nine and 10 seats at grade 10 at this time.
Can you say that again?
Yeah, Sean, can you say that again?
Eight seats.
Do we have this anywhere? This isn't in the packet, right?
What's that?
Do we have this anywhere? I don't think it's not, right?
No. This is just from looking at enrollment, because we're getting inquiries on school choice from the parents. So working with the principals, we feel we're comfortable with grade seven of opening up eight seats, and then grade nine and grade 10 for 10 seats.
10 seats each?
Correct.
This is a little earlier than we usually have this conversation. So Sean, if you can explain why you want us to have this conversation earlier?
Well, I think, you know, one of the pieces is really advocating for school choice and bringing more students in, you know, throughout other districts. So we've been receiving calls, you know, from parents from other districts of, you know, what seats are going to be open for school choice. So really looking at our numbers right at this time, we're very comfortable with those three grades. We can always, down the road, if we're looking at enrollment, open up other seats within the next, you know, month or two. But, you know, I didn't want, we didn't want to open up a little too early, but these are the grades that we're feeling pretty comfortable. Looking at all of our numbers.
I would think that there's a competitive advantage to opening up a little earlier.
Yes.
So. Questions?
Did we ever find out, I know I brought up a question, that Amesbury has a deal with what, must be Southampton?
Yeah.
Some cross-border type of stuff?
Yeah.
Does anyone know how that works?
Yeah.
People are asking me, kids who lived in maybe Seabrook, I forget where, New Hampshire, were bringing the same, making the choice into a mass school, or how does that?
Yeah. Well, we looked into it on our end, and I'm not sure what Amesbury is doing, but we wouldn't do a school choice from another state.
We wouldn't.
Yeah.
I mean, Amesbury is actually, all of those kids go to Amesbury. That entire town goes to high school.
Right, because they don't have a high school there. So I think that in effect, they subcontract with Amesbury to provide schooling, which is different than choice.
Right.
You know, any other thoughts? Dave, you look like you have some thoughts.
At some point, I would just love to see like a chart with all the numbers for each grade.
Yeah, I mean, I mean.
Because I've looked at it at DESI, but the DESI numbers are never accurate on the report card site.
And some of your questions, as we did the presentation, just touching base with Nancy Lysek, we have all of that information.
Right, so just be, at some point, just to have, have the big picture of what that looks like. And then, I guess, to include in that thought, and maybe this is a premature question on my part, but if we're thinking about utilizing staff in creative ways that could affect the amount of choice we want to have in certain places, I'm more than happy to believe that you've looked into that and considered all of it, so, but.
Yeah, and, right. No, I think when.
Like you had talked about, like, the literacy-based program, and do we have staff in the building to create a program like that in addition to what we do?
Correct.
And if we're going to do that, then we might not have as much room for choice here and there.
Right.
And then there's just always the concern about choice, like, how much is the student we're going to get potentially going to cost? Because the, you know, it's that, it is a dice roll.
Right. Well, I think that choice has been, I mean, over the years, you know, has been, I think, you know, looking at Newburyport, has been a great addition. No offering for the students committed from neighboring communities, so. But yeah, I think that the more details that we, you know, my goal also for school committees is provide you as much information. So talking, as I said, Nancy Lysek, we can give you not only all the numbers on school choice, but how many students are going to private school and really give a lot of information to school committee.
Okay. Can you hand out our emails, the status of our school enrollment and the enrollment trends, including the, you know, the departures and where they're departing to and all of that kind of good stuff?
Our next school committee meeting is a week from Monday, right?
Sure.
Dave, do you want that information before we take a vote on this, or do you feel like you can vote on it?
Like I said, I fully believe the superintendent would look into those. I'm just curious.
It's a week from Monday or it's next Monday, the 4th?
Next, it's a week from yesterday.
Week from yesterday.
Yeah.
Two weeks in a row?
Yeah. If it happens. Less than two weeks in a row.
Every February.
Does anybody have any, does anybody feel comfortable with, do I have a motion then to accept the recommendation?
So moved, yeah.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? Just, I would just say that it's been a long time since we've seen these kind of numbers recommended to us for adding choice, so.
And those are good grades too. I mean, it's not, it's a risk, but I mean, if you've got them in an eighth and ninth grade, I mean, hopefully you have them, you know, all four years here at Newburyport.
Right, right.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Passed unanimously. Last item on the agenda is.
Yes, this.
Is an MOU.
MOU. So memorandum of agreement, our understanding with the ASME union, and that was in regards to, as we were talking about the calendar, the Good Friday, and just listened to a lot of input from school committee regarding on how we could gain a day here and there. So basically, this MOU, we will give the ASME union an extra day on the winter vacation, and then on the Good Friday will be one of our half-a-days early release. And that, by starting after Labor Day, that gives us, you know, another day. And plus, you know, talking, the other pieces, working with our ASME union members, that Christmas or winter break, vacation time is a good time for them to take, you know, to swap out. So basically, on this MOU, it would be for us to try this for next year with the Good Friday, kind of regroup in January after they, you know, had their extra holiday there on the winter break. So, that's it.
Do we need to, do we need to vote on that? Vote to accept it?
Yes, I would, and then there's, the MOU is here for units, yeah, so school committee is the ones.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Any further discussion about this? Seems like it gives you some options.
Yeah. I like it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
It also alleviates the constant question, why do we have Good Friday off?
Right.
That comes up every year, so.
Now the constant question is going to be.
I'll find something.
Don't miss out on that calendar. The question is going to be, why don't?
You guys got to rest up.
Control yourselves. The last item on the agenda is adjournment. I would be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I will be meeting at some point tomorrow with Sean to go over the agenda and material for the next school committee meeting, so that should be able to get that quickly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? We stand adjourned, or we sit adjourned.
We have had questions. We're going to talk.